Order the Monroe Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Today is September 12th, 2023, and the time is 7:01. Jamie, could I have roll call, please?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
I'm here.
Mr. Heck.
Here.
Mrs. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Here.
Mrs. Vincent.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Here. Could we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Shaw, are there any additions or deletions, deletions to the agenda of the seat?
We will be adding item B3G, new administrator appointment under new business.
Does anyone have support for that?
B3G.
Okay, so we just need roll call. Roll call, please.
Or no, you need a motion.
Oh, yeah, no, can I get a motion?
Let me find G. What is B3?
So it's any new business, or, uh, so new business, 3G, new administrator appointment.
I move to amend the agenda to add the administrator appointment.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion carries. Mr. Shaw, Superintendent comments?
All right, so I have two right here for the beginning. First is, we had our bond sale this morning. Actually, midday, I guess would be a better way to point out. And so that, we're happy to say that it did sell. Closing will be on October the 4th. And the, it's amazing how close, I think we had five...
I think we ended up with five bids.
Five bids, and how close all of these bids were. And so, happy to say that the one, 4.5% was what we were, we were hoping for it to be at or less, and it came in less at, don't want to quote that, 4.725, I think?
I just pulled it up, 4.417.
Yep. So, came in last, which is a good thing. So, that, that sale did occur today, and we'll be putting more information in board briefs for you on that. And then the last item that I really wanted to spend a second on right here is, really proud of our, everyone for how we started this year. I'm going to talk more about that in my second set of comments. But this very first one, though, is our student transportation. Last year, at different times, we would be getting word that our students at Custer were not being picked up until 4:30, 4:45. And Custer dismisses at 3:51, is when that first bell rings. On the third day of school last week, hearing it on the radio, our last bus was pulling in at 3:58. On the third, on that Wednesday, sorry, Thursday and Friday of last week, our last bus is rolling back into Fennmore by 4:45. And so, we know we're still doing hiring, because we want to continue to reduce loads and reduce times. Our ultimate goal is that every single one of our buildings in the district, that we're hitting those times as far as dismissal times. The practices we've had to have in the past due to bus driver shortages is when buses roll in after dismissal time, they're calling out for bus numbers, because, and so they're being held in the building. So, we're getting closer, and hopefully really soon they'll be there. But that student transportation, I want to just commend Patty and her team publicly for their work on making it so that our kids are getting out of those buildings appropriately and getting home. So, kudos to that. So, those are my first two comments for tonight.
Darla, do we have any board agenda items for the public commentary?
No, we don't.
Okay. Let's see, acceptance of reports. Any discussion on those? Nope, we're good? Do we vote them?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so. Next, we have our consent agenda item. Are there any items that board members would like to move off the consent agenda item and move over to new business? Hearing, oh, what?
Then hearing them, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented, as well as all the items on the consent agenda.
There's support?
Support.
If we have roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. Mrs. Flynn? Do we have any new hires today?
We do. Actually, we have several here tonight. Actually, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to read your name and what you're going to do, and if you could come up to the podium, and if you want to tell us anything more about yourself, you can. But as I read your name, you'll come up to the podium, okay? So, our first person tonight, and she was the first person here tonight, is Autumn Hensley. She's going to be an ELA teacher, or is a ELA teacher, at Monroe Middle School. Autumn, if you could come up, and you're going to speak, and then we're going to greet you.
I am just excited to serve my teaching career at Monroe Public Schools. I'm an alumni of Monroe Public, as well as my daughters, and I currently have a junior at Monroe High. So, I'm excited to continue the tradition of having alumni from Monroe High.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
What grade?
Some grade.
Welcome home. Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
The next individual is Erin Shuesberry. Is a Restorative Practices Coordinator from Monroe Middle School, and that was, and that's effective September 18th, 2023.
Hi, I'm Erin. As she said, I'll be the Restorative Practices Coordinator at the middle school. The last couple of years, I've been up in Canton as an administrator, so I'm super excited to come back home, because I live here in Carlton. And I have three kids of my own. My son is 19, and he goes to Sienna Heights playing baseball. And my twin daughters are at Airport as sophomores. So, yeah. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you for coming.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome.
Now, if you want your job. You'd be welcome. It's funny, you know. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Our next individual is a Spanish, going to be a Spanish teacher at Monroe High School effective September 25th, and that's Carly Stranyak. Is that correct?
Correct.
Awesome.
Hello, my name's Carly. I am also an alumni from Monroe High. I graduated in '08. I am coming from the community college over to Monroe Public Schools, and I'm super excited to be back in the classroom, so, thank you.
Congratulations.
Mr. Superintendent, may I vote no to keeper?
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard, maybe not go back.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Welcome. Welcome, Carly.
And certainly, last but not least, we have Tracy Willarius. She is going to be a registered behavior technician for Waterloo Elementary School, and she began her new position on September 1st.
Hello. I am also Monroe High alumni. I've been with the district for many years. I've been an assistant for a long time, so I've been here a while. I'm super excited to start my new position. So far, it's been going really well, and I'm just super excited to start my new role. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
So again, welcome to all of our new staff members. We're excited to have you a part of Monroe Public Schools and all that you're going to bring to us. So, exciting school year.
I believe that brings us to Superintendent evaluation. Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to assign the effective rate, effectiveness rating of, I don't think it was, ah, effective, yes, to Mr. Andrew Shaw in accordance with the completed evaluation discussed with Mr. Andrew Shaw in closed session.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing done, Jamie, could we have a roll call?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to the CTE storage building. Mr. Shaw?
So, at our prior workshop that we had, our meeting two weeks ago, we shared with you the plans of addition of a CTE building at the high school. That CTE addition would be a storage building that we're, it would be constructed similar to how we do our Trojan builds, where certain parts of the project will be done with, through quotes and through professionals, with then also though a major part of the work being done by our own CTE department, from both our first-year students and our second-year students. And so, we're recommending tonight that the Board of Education approve the CTE building addition, as proposed, at a cost not to exceed $360,000. The funding of that would be taken out of the CTE Trojan build, and so that's when we sell the houses each year, and those monies then would be used to offset that cost.
Can we get a motion?
I move to approve the CTE storage building addition as proposed, at a cost not exceeding $360,000. The CTE storage building addition will be funded from the profits from the CTE Trojan build.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Normally, I would oppose any building if we can have some kind of architectural hierarchy. Sorry. I would normally oppose the building of any kind of structure without some architectural hierarchy of needs. For example, we have classes that we don't even have classes for, for example, orchestra. However, in this particular case, this is very unusual in that the CTE department is going to fund their own projects. So, based upon that, I think that's unique, and it does alleviate my concerns about building. So, in other words, no money's coming out of our general fund, only as money that's being fronted only, but it's going to be paid back. So, based upon that, that's my only concern. But I'm still going to support that based upon the fact that they are financing their own building.
Anyone else?
If I may, I had the pleasure of meeting the CTA, the CTE team, and looking at the resources out there in this space. And I think they did a very, very good job of effectively explaining this need. And so, I commend them for that, because I'm applauding this for you all. Congrats.
Any other discussion?
I'd also like to say that it's really nice to see that many of our first and second-year CTE students will be part of this build.
We have a roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Dr. Behrens.
Irresounding yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. That takes us to ACAP contract. Mr. Shaw?
So, we had our ACAP and did a pro, presentation to the board, which was done in closed session due to school safety needs. And from the school safety needs, and also from our active shooter drill, we really feel that we're at a spot where we could use that oversight and guidance from, from ACAP. And so, we brought forward a contract with that. That oversight and guidance is really about best practices and helping us to keep our eyes focused on what's happening out there. And the beautiful part about this contract, you see it's for three years. It's coming out of the grant of 31AA for security funds. The last six months of that contract, you notice that if there's hours to be carried over, up to 150 hours can still be used in that six, last six months after they're already outside of the contract. So, they recognize that those hours, really, we have 900 hours to use in three and a half years. So, it's, it's a great way for us to make, to do this work right there. The other selling point on this work is that some of this is labor-intensive when it comes to writing and getting that out. And that's where we get that support of ACAP, is in getting that, that writing done, so we can make sure things are done appropriately. So, we're recommending the contract between American Comprehensive Assessment and Planning ACAP and Monroe Public Schools as submitted. This contract will be effective from September 13th, 2023, through June 30th, 2026. With the exception of a possible 150 hours to be used between July 1, 2026, and December 30th, 2026, ACAP will provide Monroe Public Schools with 300 hours per school year of comprehensive school safety planning at no cost, sorry, at a cost not to exceed $31,500 per year, and for a total of $94,500. This will be paid from 31AA, 31AA security funds.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the contract for ACAP for a cost not to exceed $31,500 per year, or $94,500 total, and that paid for through the 31AA security funds.
Support?
Support.
I'll support.
Any discussion?
I think they brought a lot of good points to our attention. And I think the safety and security of our students is one of the most important things that we do here. Certainly, we don't want anything to happen to any student that comes into our building, etc. So, they pointed out some good things for us in their presentation, and they're going to continue on working on that, and I do appreciate that. So, when it comes to school safety, they think we have to do whatever we can in these kind of days that we have all these shootings, etc., so.
I agree with you 150%. Any other discussion?
They, I commend you for a great presentation. It explained a lot, opened our eyes to a lot, and I agree with the sentiments of my other board members. We also had the luxury of watching your team work. Any of us had, were out there for that, and that's unique to be able to watch the team work before we kind of vote you in. So, nice job.
I think, too, we, this past year, we put a lot of technology in place for security, but that missing point is always to have some experts in to make sure we're using it effectively, and all those gaps are covered between the technology and the personnel.
I agree, I agree that personnel is critical here because of that, um, something that we just can't substitute for, so.
Roll call, please, Jamie.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion carries. Tenure recommendation. Mrs. Flynn?
Thank you, President Zimmerman. Tonight, we're asking the board to move to confirm and endorse the granting, granting of tenure and removal from probation for Holly Moore and Andrew Hopper on the appropriate anniversary dates.
Can we get a motion?
So moved to confirm and endorse the granting of tenure and removal from probation for Holly Moore and Andrew Hopper on the appropriate anniversary dates.
Support.
Any discussion? We have a roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. That takes us to band trailer purchase. Mr.?
Malopsi.
Malopsi.
I'll take it. Ben, I've been called worse. We'll take it.
Sorry about that, Dave.
That's okay. Mr. President, we ask the board to move to approve the purchase of a replacement band trailer from the one that was involved in an accident over the summer from Kelly and Sons at a cost not to exceed $16,770. This purchase will be funded from high school capital outlay funds.
Can we get a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of the replacement band trailer not to exceed $16,770.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion?
I'd recommend that we add this, or at least we make the comment about the insurance from the trailer that did get damaged, because that really offsets part of this cost.
Yep. Yep, and that amount was 30...
The insurance agency valued the trailer that was damaged at $3,500, and we will receive that in full from them.
Roll call, please, Jamie.
Yes, Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. Reinstatement hearing, Mr. Dave.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, we ask the board to move to accept the recommendation of the committee to deny the reinstatement of student A, or move to reject the recommendation of the committee and approve the conditional reinstatement of student A, or move to reject the, excuse me, move to reject the recommendation of the reinstatement committee and unconditionally reinstate student A.
Can I get a motion?
I'm moved to accept the recommendation of the committee.
There's support?
Support.
What, I didn't catch that motion.
I approved the recommendation of the committee.
For the reinstatement.
To, to deny the reinstatement.
Yes, it's, it's deny the reinstatement.
That's why I'm like, might want this one.
I'm sorry, I should have said the whole thing, I'm sorry.
Roll call, please, Jamie.
Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion carries. That brings us, because we have no old business to see. Oh, nope, you're right, skipped one there.
B3G.
EG3. Administration appointment, Mr. Dave. He's got me all flustered now.
I, I do not have, I would love, I would love to announce this, but I do not have that in front of me.
I think it's Mrs. Flynn.
It's in front of you now.
It's in front of me now. Yes.
We ask the board to approve the appointment of Mr. Andrew Duncan as the administrator with Monroe Public Schools effective September 11th, 2023, and placed on the appropriate salary level and contained in the master agreement as middle school principal.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to accept the appointment to middle school principal, as stated.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion?
I would just indicate that the current principal is also doing a good job.
Have you heard that?
I heard that.
With a smile on his face.
Yeah, with a smile on his face.
Would that be Mr. Dave?
It would be Mr. Dave.
It's been an honor and a privilege to serve.
Can we get a roll call, please, Jamie?
No double duty anymore.
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion carries. I believe our new principal is in the audience?
He is in the audience.
Oh, great.
Come on up.
We've got big footsteps to follow now.
Good evening, my name is Andrew Duncan. It's my 17th year in education, 11th in administration. I'm just excited to be here in such a wonderful place and use my skills to help students and staff members succeed to their fullest potential and be part of the Trojan family. So, thank you very much.
Welcome, sir.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Watch your step. All right, as we have no old business items this evening, I will turn this over to Mr. Shaw for Superintendent.
All right, thank you. So, as I alluded at the beginning, our, the start of the school year was very successful. Truly proud and thankful for every employee, everyone that did all the behind-the-scenes work to make it so that the start was as smooth as we could make it. Getting on the radio and listening to our bus drivers talk to each other, and our, and our routers to our buildings communicating to each other, and, and that excitement. And, you know, just thrilled for how everyone stepped right up and made the first days go extremely well. And, you know, it took, it takes a lot to get that to happen in a district this size. So, I commend everybody for that. Trojan Pride Night, this Thursday night is a big night out at the high school at Bunkelman Field. They're celebrating our junior league, the flag football, the middle school, and the freshman players. So, they've got like six practice stations going on out there prior to the 7 o'clock game that we happen, happening. The High School Trojan Band, they're already out and about. They're at the high school, I think it was like, what was that, last Tu- Wednesday, Thursday? They're over there. But they're going to begin their music tour right now on September, Thursday, September 21st, to those elementaries. And it's a great recruiting tool for them. And then, you know, as we were talking throughout the summer, hey, that first day of school is coming up. Well, guess what, homecoming's coming up, okay? And so, homecoming is coming soon. Monroe High School will hold a dress giveaway after school on September the 21st. Homecoming Week runs September 25th through the 30th. So, for any of you that want to take part in watching the Powderpuff game, that will be on the Wednesday night. And then, the football game is that, that Friday night. They're in dance on Saturday. So, lots of festivities happening that week. And so, but again, I want to just go back to personally now thanking my, my cabinet for their hard work this summer and everything that they've, they've done. We have a lot of movement happening this year in this school district, and it's positively moving forward, and I'm thanking them immensely for their time and effort that they've put into it. So, those are my comments for tonight.
All right, thank you, sir. Public commentary, Darla, do we have any?
No, we don't.
Is there any board member, any board commentary tonight?
I've got a question. After we put in the driveway at Raisenvale, what's the feedback from the community and the parents?
I say, oh, my.
So, we actually did a double fix out there. Once we got it going, we actually ended up, I'm sorry, Scott Hopper counted 160 cars. And so my goodness, that first day we get out there and they were backed up all the way down to Stewart Road. Even though we had it, and Scott's like, you know, he has those times when parents should be coming in, all of that laid out. So we could see that the amount of cars was not going to slow down. So we actually moved our buses into the north lot and have it now. Because we were only able to load or unload five to six cars at a time in the system. So now by getting those cars up along the, the building, it's at 10 to 12 cars per time. And so the times are driving down. Today, we saw the text, I think it was 3:55 or three, four o'clock right there, four o'clock when they had them all, all out of there. So it's much better. I know that when Scott said when they were loading that first group of cars right there, there were, there were a lot of smiles.
Having to drive by this evening when they were doing that.
I know people that operate in the drive-by and, and they were so happy today as compared to earlier, so yeah.
Yep.
Big, big improvement.
So we saw how that was working on Tuesday and then we just kept working to resolve it further and got to a spot where once you hit the double line on, on the gravel right there and the way that it moves up in front of you, your cars won't stop moving now. And so, yeah, and so you could still even, because all the traffic, beauty was all the traffic was going north on Raisenville Road. So you could still have people going either direction right there, but now those, those cars are off the road.
Now, I know there was like a fender bender with a bus at Custer that first day.
No, it was, it was after, it was that morning of the first day, school, kids were already in the building. Bus was, had left and because it's a hard, hard to make a left out there and they right when it was sitting down there. Another car was sitting behind them and the car behind that car flip-flop got stuck on the gas pedal. Ran into the car, car then next car, so.
I was wondering if it was also due to the backup that occurs at Custer.
Nope, they'd already fully left the building. But Custer is next on our list to solve. And so you'll be seeing plans probably in the next two or three weeks from us and how we think we, and how we believe we can solve it out there at Custer. Their, their building is a little bit more complicated because one, you have the two buildings and two trying to make so, being cautious on students and buses and movement of kids.
I know someone who lives in Southfield Village and they'll be very thankful.
Oh, yeah.
To get that resolved.
Yep, no, we, that is, we've already began last Friday looking at it and so we're going to have that resolved soon.
Anyone else?
I have a, a couple of housekeeping items off of my list. Housekeeping items off of my own personal list. I like to check things off. The, the food quality, I know we brought that up a few times, looking at the menus, looking at that. And I just wanted to know where we were at with that.
Peju is working on a list of the improvements that they've made. It was a little difficult for her to work on it so much over the summer when they had multiple programs running, but I did touch base with her and she is working on that and we should have that to the board in the next few weeks, I hope.
Okay, thank you for that. The other one was the ATI therapy contract. I hadn't heard that pop back up again. So I wasn't sure if that's something that is still on the radar. Am I saying it wrong? That contract with the trainer.
Physical therapy.
ATI?
Yep.
Am I saying it wrong?
No, we.
No.
We approved it.
It was, it was based on the two corrections within the contract. If, if they approved those two corrections, then.
Yes, you'll see the, you'll see, I'll, I'll put that in our board briefs.
Okay.
For you.
Okay. Okay. The other one is kind of a odd thing, but it's been brought to my attention, bees and mosquitoes. Just putting it out there that the stadium, it has a lot of bees and there's maybe, I don't know, something anybody could do about it. I didn't know if we had an integrated pest, pest management program or anything like that out there. I figured so.
And on that one right there, they're already aware, frames has already been called out. But Dave will follow up with Tim tomorrow on this.
I promised people I would mention it, so thank you. Yeah.
Anyone else?